Huntsville City Council Work Session is now in order. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the current condition of City Hall and discuss a Plan Four. That's the only business we have for tonight. Mr. Hamilton, do you, Mr. Easter, who wants to go first? Mayor Battle?
I think I'll start. We started this process, gosh, some thirty-something years ago. When I was on council in nineteen eighty-six, we decided to renovate this building. There was one council member who came forward, and I think Debbie Roop was there at that time, and that council member wanted to implode the building, if you remember. And she had seen the implosion of one of the casinos out in Las Vegas and said that we should probably blow up this building and not spend any more money on it. Instead, we spent, I want to say sixteen, eighteen million dollars or something on it, just to renovate the whole building, and we added on additional space on the first, second, and third floor. But since that time, there hasn't, you know, we have not gone through a major renovation of the building. The building was started off as something that was very unique and very classy in the nineteen sixties, but as City Hall has grown, we have outgrown this space. Each floor is about twenty-five hundred square feet, so it's not very efficient space. And as we've gone through, we've seen some, we've seen the topography change of the downtown area. We will talk in a little while about the sites that we looked at when we started looking for a new City Hall. The thought of moving away from downtown was something that we didn't want to do. We wanted to stay close to the, close to the square, wanted to be in the, kind of the center of the downtown area. But one thing to remember about City Hall is City Hall is open Monday through Friday, eight to five. After that, it's pretty much a ghost town, and it does not add to what our planners or planning crew would add as one of those eight to ten points of interest that come, that you need to make an area active and well-used. We started off three years ago, and we redid Big Spring Park. Last year, we did, I mean, we redid Big Spring Park East, and last year, we redid Big Spring Park. And as we add those points of interest and we make each of them move forward, we have seen each of those areas become active areas, active parks. Right now, in this city, we have probably about fifty, fifty-two parks. And out of those fifty-two parks, I would say probably forty of them are pretty much dormant parks. Not many people moving around at them, not many people go to them, but they are parks nevertheless, which is open green space to have throughout your city. But the activity in the parks is something that I think each community throughout the United States thrives for, so that you have activity to make people want to be part of an area. And as you become part of an area, then you start finding, you start finding reasons to want to be part of an area, and you find yourself having what I would call, you know, our, we have our urban environment, and that urban environment is there to cause someone to want to be part of your area, be part of your quality of life. That's where we started off with this. So today, we are looking at this City Hall and what to do with this City Hall. Five, probably eight years ago, Tommy Brown, who is our Director of Parking at Traffic and Parking, came to us and said the parking garage across the street here is antiquated and has some structural problems. We have put patches on those structural problems to make sure that it still was able to be usable, but we have never, you know, never really addressed those, those problems of an antiquated parking deck in the past. And so that kind of plays into the decision that was, that has been finally made of where we would like to see City Hall moved to. This will be a council decision. Council has many decision points as we go through this process, you know, and we will be bringing them to you, and we'll lay those out tonight for you. So thank you for the opportunity to have a conversation about our City Hall and its prominence in our downtown area.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. And council members, tonight, as we go through the slides, it'll be a fairly lengthy presentation. If you have questions, either get my attention or get the speaker's attention, but let's go ahead and ask the questions as they come up fresh in our heads. Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, if I could have Mr. Easter go ahead and go to the agenda slide. Just, you know, so I want to make sure it's clear, we've, you know, we've had citizens ask us about, you know, what's tonight and what's going on. I want to make sure that it's very clear to the public. You know, one, this is a work session, so there are absolutely no votes asked for or allowed in this session by City Council. There are no decisions that we're going to ask council to make during tonight. This is really, as the mayor said, to bring you up to speed, up to date on where we are in the process. And some folks that I've talked to think we're deeper into the process than we really are. So I want to make sure, hopefully, we're clear as we go through exactly where we are in terms of scoping the requirement. And at the end, we lay out a timeline that reflects what we think is the fastest we could possibly go in terms of coming to council for decisions and executing those decisions. Obviously, there are things that could, could cause us to delay that timeline. So the timeline you'll see at the end is really kind of the fastest it could possibly go. The, you see, the agenda on the screen, what we want to hit on is, one, is make sure that everyone understands the condition of the existing facilities. And, you know, we typically refer to this building that we're sitting in right now as City Hall. And that's not necessarily wrong, but I think in tonight's discussion, we need not think of it that way. And what I mean by that, and you'll see on the slides that Mr. Easter has produced, he refers to this as the administration building. The reason for that is when you think of City Hall as a set of functions, not just a building, but think of City Hall as the people, the city employees, and the functions that they deliver to our citizens, it takes a collection of buildings to make up City Hall because of the way we currently are set up. This building is not anywhere near big enough to house all of those functions for our citizens. And so, you know, there's places in there where I think that's clear, but I want to really emphasize that point, that as we contemplate what the future of City Hall might be, we lay out one choice of continuing with a collection of buildings that in the aggregate make up City Hall versus a single building that replaces all those, and in that, that single building is able to deliver the functions that you think of as City Hall. So hopefully, the slides are clear on that. So we'll lay out the condition of this building and what it would take, it and the other buildings to retain them, versus what we think right now would look like in a replacement building and the current estimates for those costs. The estimates that we've talked about over the last couple of months have not changed, but they are estimates. We don't have buildable designs, we don't have blueprints, we have none of the things necessary to get to a really refined cost, but we have good models, and not only ones that we've used routinely, but also ones that come out of industry standards that give us, give us the estimates that we need to continue to move forward should council choose as we get to those points. So Mr. Easter is really the expert on these things. He has led the process over the last number of years to do the analysis on these things, and so he will deliver the vast majority of this presentation. There's a few places where I'll jump in to add some things, but Mr. Easter, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start out with, I've got a slide here just to show you, we went to the library and got some pictures of how City Hall has changed over the years, and you can see that we haven't had just one building the entire time we've been in existence, so.
Mr. Easter, we're having trouble hearing you. I don't know if it's a microphone or you...
Hello, can you hear, is that better?
Is that better?
Hello? Yes, sir. All right, I'm sorry about that. Okay. All right, let me move forward to the slide and actually get into the information we're going to present tonight. I do have some historical data I'd like to just kind of go over with you. The current building that we're in was built in nineteen sixty-three. It originally started out at forty-one thousand five hundred square feet. That was just the tower. There was an annex that was part of the building, but that has no longer been occupied for many years now, actually. In nineteen eighty-six, as the mayor mentioned, we added twenty thousand square feet to the, to the building. There were several reasons for that extension or that expansion to the building. It was not just to add square footage, there were some structural problems with the building, and they actually had to add on to the side of the building in order to stabilize the building. And so they accomplished two things at the same time. That was back in nineteen eighty-six. Currently, the building houses approximately a hundred and twenty-two employees. The actual need, as Mr. Hamilton indicated, for city administration is two-hundred-and-ninety-four, and as we move forward in the presentation, you'll see how we, how we, how we get those, get to that number.
Mr. Easter, how was that decision made to add on instead of tearing it down, then? Do you know? Were you here?
I've done a little bit of research on that, and yes, it was a very controversial decision. There were some council members that felt like the building needed to be demolished. There was other council members decided they'd like to retain the building, and it, best I understand, the original cost anticipated to add on to the building was going to be a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot, which at that time was a premium but fair price. But for the record, when it was all said and done, it ended up costing about two-hundred and forty dollars a square foot, twice what they anticipated. And so it was a, you know, they thought at the time that if they moved forward with a renovation, that it would actually come within normal renovation costs at that time.
And you also have to remember that at that time, I mean, our budget was probably thirty-nine million a year. It was nowhere near what it is today, and to build something that would cost us at that time, you know, you know, ten to twenty million dollars was one-third of our budget, and we were trying to, you know, and we felt like the, we didn't have the problems with the marble at that time. We didn't have the problems with the porticoes out there. The, the building looked very nice, especially after it was finished. I was on council when we started, I never got to move into the finished building.
Oh, I had to know that. Well, it's, you know, the marble's going to be an issue that we're going to talk about several times tonight. The marble has been an issue from day one, actually, starting in nineteen sixty-three. Approximately every ten years, there was a major issue with the marble on the building, and it continues today. And we will talk about that in a little bit more detail as we move forward. I do want to tell you, before I actually get into talking about all of these items that we have listed, when we're talking about the current condition of the building, as a person that is responsible for maintaining property for my, almost my entire career, I want to tell you that if, my opinion, that I'd like to get rid of the building today, because I can tell you, we are going to spend significant dollars one way or another. We're either going to spend it based on council and administration's decisions of how we move forward, but there will be substantial dollars, and I can tell you right now, I believe that as we move further in the presentation, you will see it will be equivalent to or more than what a new building would, will cost. And I actually have some details of some things I actually want to show you. The other thing that I would like to do is, I know that in this forum right here, you know, there may be an opportunity, I want to give you the opportunity to give you an actual personal walkthrough of the building, of the back of the house kind of locations, the areas of the building that you won't normally see as you come and go out of the building, so that you can actually see some of the items that we're talking about, because the majority of this building is still fifty years old, it's over fifty years old. And we're talking about not just the building, we're talking about some of the critical systems that operates this building. In this case right here, like I mentioned on the slides, the structural integrity of the building, I can tell you, in nineteen eighty-six, it had to be stabilized because it did not meet the codes at that time. I can tell you, back in two thousand and thirteen, we hired an engineer to come in and take a quick look at it, and I can tell you right now, the building does not meet current structural standards. And if we were to retain this building, we will have to demo the building to a certain point and restabilize it to match the current structural standards that would be required. There's other items related to the building that's very critical. Item ADA, I mean, this room right here, while we survive ADA, it is not ADA, this building is not a hundred percent ADA compliant. And, you know, it's just something that, you know, we're going to have to build in as we move, as we move forward. The other, Egress, this is considered a high-rise building. On a high-rise building nowadays, you have to have more than one means of exit from a building. You can't stay up inside a high-rise building and expect to only have one exit. So even if we were to retain this building, we would have to find another and install another stairwell in this building somehow at a cost that does nothing to improve the efficiency or does nothing to improve the operation of the building. As we go through it, I'm going to go into, I actually have some pictures to show you some of this stuff. Like I said, the electrical in this building's fifty years old, the elevators, we're all familiar with the elevators and how many times we've all got stuck on the elevators, including myself, one time for about two hours on a weekend, and I came in over the weekend and was working when no one else was here, and luckily, I had a phone number to one of our maintenance folks. The other, a couple of other things I guess I want to mention, as I was going through this review, I realized the condition of the building is so, to my, in my mind, so severe that I want to commend the staff that maintains this building on a daily basis. I can tell you, for the people that has occupied this building for many, many years, they will know that there was a long period of time where there was constant problems with heat and air conditioning and other problems that just made the environment unlivable, really, to live in. And I'll tell you, I just, I want to take this opportunity to commend the people that do this on a day-to-day basis. Let me move on. I want to get into a little bit of specifics. What I'm going to go through is a series of slides, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them, but what I'd want you to know is, as I go through these slides, we're going to slowly add up some money, so that when we get to the end of a few slides here, you're going to have a rough idea of the magnitude of the cost of the items that we're talking about. In this particular case, I want to focus real quick on interior renovation. This is basically, it will cost approximately, right now, we're estimating a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot just for interior renovations, and that does nothing more than take care of the items that's like you're talking, that you see in the pictures. For those that walk the basement every day, I know you've seen the bucket down there. You know, that is a bucket that stays there, basically, because of water that we cannot stop from infiltrating into the building. I actually believe that we're going to have to remove all the marble off of the elevator tower in order to solve that one leak right there in that one building. The building's just, it's got tremendous amount of leaks, but this, I can tell you right now, we're estimating, just to maintain the same square footage that we have today, we're looking at about nine million dollars just to clean it up and do interior renovations. The elevators, mentioned it earlier, the elevators, we're estimating this at about six-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. This is nineteen sixty-three equipment. It's located up on the top of the building. Unfortunately, if we was to have a major failure with either one of these pieces of equipment that you see up here, we are actually going to have to remove the roof off the building in order to repair or replace the unit, if we can even find a replacement unit. I suspect that if we have a failure between now and the time that we actually make a decision of whether, of what we're going to do moving forward, I'm going to say we're going to be down one elevator, we'll be down to a single elevator until decisions are made. But in this case right here, this is an example where they put equipment in, built the building around it, and we'd have to actually remove the roof in order to get to it. The electrical service, again, went back in the eighties, this was not changed, this was not changed out. This is the original nineteen sixty-three equipment. The issue that we have here, this is, they do not put in systems like this anymore. There are, right now, we are concerned about turning any of these breakers off, that if we do, when we turn the breaker back on, we may not have power. And if we can't turn it, if we can't turn the power break on, breaker back on, there is no replacement breakers for these. These are obsolete. So, you know, we are very careful of how we manage and operate these, all of these breakers right now. Like I mentioned a minute ago, this, this is what they call a low voltage system. This is actually a six-thousand amp system. Currently, they would never build a building like this anymore. They would put in what they call a four-eighty volt service, and they just don't do this anymore. This is very antiquated. It was not addressed in nineteen eighty-six. The generator, now, this was added back in eighty-six, the original building did not have an elevator, did not have a generator. The problem we have is, it's thirty years old. For some reason, I think a lot of people think the building was renovated back in nineteen eighty-six, and now we're good. Keep in mind, this is, this is thirty-year-old technology, this is a generator now that, you know, we, we hope continues to run. If it fails, I am certain that there will be components of it that we can get, but there are certain components that we cannot get on this, on the generator.
Jeff, what actually runs off the generator? Because remember when we had the tornadoes, we couldn't actually operate the offices here.
That's correct. Very good point. This generator is not intended for operation of the building. This generator is intended to power the building just enough for people to get out of the building. This is what they call a life safety generator. This only powers emergency lights and one elevator at a time. And so it's really not intended to operate, but like the mayor indicated, you know, there are times where the citizens expect us to continue to operate, you know, regardless of what the situation is, so that we can respond to their needs. And if we have an administration building that is down and not operating just because the generator cannot handle the load, then, you know, we're not servicing the needs of the people. This is a very interesting, I know the pictures are not going to be very clear, this is definitely one of those back-of-the-house locations that I would love for, to take someone and show them. This is located in the basement. On the picture to your right, that is our heat and air conditioning units. They were put in the building, and the building was built around it. If we have a failure, we are literally going to be cutting this equipment up to dig it out and putting the new equipment in and assembling it in place, and that's after we customize whatever piece of equipment is that we have to put in place. This is, again, it's like I said, it's fifty-three years old, our guys are, you know, they're doing their best to maintain it, but I can tell you, it's, it's waiting to happen. The other two pictures, the reason I have those in there is I want to emphasize the amount of rust we dug back, just a little bit of the insulation, just so we can see the condition of the piping and the components that are hid behind the insulation, it's just pure rust. The picture in the middle, that's just pure rust, that's just set in that environment. So...
Mr. Easter?
Yes?
This, the units here, were they designed the last fifty-three years? I'm surprised they haven't broken before then.
You're exactly right, and that's why I commend the staff because...
So it's never broken down, you never had to go in and cut it?
We've never had to remove these particular pieces of equipment. Now, I, we have had one failure on a shaft where we literally disassembled, partially disassembled one unit to actually take a shaft through one unit to get to a second unit, and that was about ten years ago. But you're exactly right, this equipment is not designed to last over fifty years. This, I can tell you, this, the ASHRAE standards for something like this would be thirty to forty years. So, yeah, this is extended life, we are living on life support. On all these components and systems that I'm mentioning that are fifty years old, we own life support as we, as we currently speak, and this is, this is a perfect example of it. Yes, sir.
If we're on borrowed time, I guess with a lot of these systems, when you go in, if we propose to go to another building, do we outsource any of our work, or is everything done by your department when it comes to building maintenance? So I guess the second part of that question is, if we go to another building, you'll work directly with the builder to how you would want your guys to be able to service the building?
We would, that's correct. It would be two-phase on it. The, the project office would develop a set of standards and specs that will be bid into the project, and that will come with input from the maintenance staff. Currently, right now, and that is one of the items that, you know, that I think is working well, is when the project office and the maintenance office got combined into a single department, which has not been, always been the case, it's been that way for about five years under Mayor Battle's direction, that allows the project office and the maintenance staff to work side-by-side for a common good. And so it shows up in our plans and our specs and the bid documents. So when we do get a new building, the maintenance staff, they're, you know, they, they know what they're getting, and they've agreed to, agreed to what it is. Now, as far as what gets subcontracted out, there's a certain level that we, a certain level of expertise that we subcontract out. It deals with, you know, a little higher level of engineering.
And I guess that's, that was my question. So this is sort of in a sense a learning lesson for what you don't want in the next building, and then you'll have somewhat of a wish list, I guess, of what you know you would want as somebody who would maintain the maintenance of the next building?
That is correct. I can tell you, like in this case right here, I would never put components in the basement and then build the building around it. In fact, actually, code will not even allow you to do that anymore, but, yeah, that, this is a perfect example, we would not do this.
You know, and a good lesson, Laura, I mean, a good recent example, the Aquatic Center, which obviously is, in terms of square footage, is not as big as a new City Hall would be, but complexity, probably more complex of a construction project than building an office building. Some of the sessions with the architect, as they were going through the design process, Jeff actually brought in maintenance supervisors, the guys that are on the ground maintaining buildings and, you know, reviewing accessibility to certain components and, and making sure that it is aligned and maintainability. That same kind of process will occur on every, every project we do, particularly one of this size and complexity.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
In addition to the risk of failure that we face daily with this old equipment, I'm assuming also it's not anywhere near as energy efficient as new technology would be. Do you have any sense of how much money that's costing us as opposed to new equipment if it were in place? What would be the savings?
Yes, I do. I do not have that exact dollars, but I can tell you, actually, through this process, we ran some of those numbers and those calculations, and we based best practice on current designed buildings compared to what we have today in this building. And actually, I'm going to show you a picture here in a couple of minutes that will show you just how inefficient the windows on this building is. But, yeah, I can tell you, we're, we're running at least about thirty percent more energy on this building than we should. Not to mention the inefficiency of this building. And when I mean inefficiency, I mean operational inefficiency. This building is what they call sixty-two percent efficient. In other words, you can only assign sixty-two percent of this building's square footage to an assignable person or task. The rest of the square footage is in common space, mechanical rooms, you know, it's in hallways and restrooms, and that's, that's inefficient for today's standards. Today's standards are, a building should be about eighty percent efficient, which actually reduces your square, your, your energy costs as well.
What is the estimated square footage you think you're going to need for the, what's it, two-hundred-and-ninety-four employees?
Oh, we're actually going to be getting to that here in just a couple of minutes, but I can tell you, it's, it's going to be right at a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, which is less than we currently occupy when you add up all of the locations that Colonel Hamilton mentioned a minute ago, or...
A hundred and thirty thousand, right now, this building here, just this building right here is what, forty-one or sixty-one?
Sixty-one, five.
Sixty-one, five.
Yeah. But we actually have some, some charts and some graphs and actual data that's going to really clarify that for you. The marble, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because I think this has been in the public's eye for a long, long time, but I can tell you several things about the marble. You may remember, down in, back in two thousand and seven, we hired WJE, a facade expert out of Chicago. They came in, and the reason they came in is because we actually had some failures on the building. You know, have we had marble fall on the building? The answer is yes. Have we had any marble fall on the building since we have taken the precautions that we've had? We have not had any falling, we've had some come loose, and we actually, our locations on the building, that we've had to take the marble off, and we put plywood up and painted it like marble, and you really don't even realize that it's there, but if I point it out to you, you will realize that that's not marble in its place. It is still a serious issue. You can no longer, I can tell you, back in the sixties, the marble facade on a building was, it was the thing that everybody was wanting to do. What they have realized is almost every application like this one has failed. And it's, it's what they realized is, is the marble is not a stable material. Marble is soft, marble over time will warp and bend, and just that warping and bending causes it to come loose from anchors and things of that nature. In fact, if you come out, if you go out and look at the building and you look up, you will actually, you can see how much some of the marble components have actually warped and bent. When they originally, when they were put on the building, they were flat, and they're no longer flat today. You cannot do this installation on a building anymore, it's not allowed. You can still put marble on the building, but the, the requirements are, it uses twice the thick as material, so it'd be twice the cost. People are not doing it, it's not cost-effective anymore.
You know, I just want to ask the question out of respect to Ms. Reed, there is no way, as we talk about cost efficiency with this marble, that one could save it and integrate it with that statement being made?
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, I would like to cover that. I'm, I know that you cannot see it well from the pictures, but if you look closely, you'll see there just, it's nothing but cracks in the marble. The, you can't tell it, but the picture on the left is actually the white marble, the picture on the left is, is the gray marble. We've had less problems with the gray marble, but actually, it's in worse condition when you take the consideration of the actual marble itself. It is not going to be able to be... Uh, it is not going to be able to be reused in any fashion, unfortunately. In fact, the cost to remove it, to attempt to do something with it will be far exceed, uh, any benefits that we, that we could ever get out of it. Not to say, as we're demoing the building, if that's, you know, if what's elected to do, or if we elect to remove the facade, the marble facade, that we can't try and save some pieces that potentially could go inside a, uh, a lobby somewhere just for, you know, sentimental value. But I can tell you, the marble in this building has no value to anybody.
Well, I like the idea of the historic or heritage sentimental, whatever. If there's a way it could be incorporated into a new inside non-load bearing room or something like that.
Right. Uh, that's something we have to look at, but, uh, right now, my, uh, my initial thoughts is it would be very expensive to save any of it. I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, just other than I can tell you, the roofs on this building, we've had, uh, we've replaced a couple of roofs here and there, but there's, people don't realize it, there's not just one roof on this building. There's about seven. There's multiple levels and areas and, and, uh, you know, we, we got roof problems. And it's really, there's so many leaks on this building. It's hard to tell whether it's the marble, whether it's the, uh, the, uh, the roof, whether it's the flashing, whether it's the windows, um, you know, we would almost need to solve all of the problem, all the leak problems at one time if, you know, if we're going to do that. But we, this, again, if we're going to renovate the building or even entertain keeping it, this is a cost that we have to keep adding up. I am going to pause here for just a minute because I, this is a critical area. Uh, this is, I want to discuss the unknowns because there are a lot of unknowns on this building. The, one of the unknowns is going to be the, the structural integrity of the frame of the building. We know mathematically that it does not meet the code if we was to renovate it and continue to use the building. We have suspicion there could be some other issues going on, uh, with using the, the frame of the building or having to spend extra money. And then in addition to that, I want you to think about how many codes have changed in 30 years. Everything has gotten more stringent. And I'm going to give you one example that is, uh, the heat and air conditioning. All of the ductwork that runs through this building, currently right now, it's just one single, basically one single open ductwork. Current codes require that every time you penetrate a wall, it has to have a fire damper. So now all this ductwork that goes from the basement all the way up through this building and through all of the locations, uh, you know, it, that entire ductwork would have to be totally ripped out, put back to scratch and put in what they call fire dampers. And that's for life safety. I mean, if you have a fire in a building or if you have smoke, you don't want the smoke rushing up through some big ductwork going straight to the top of the building where if it had fire dampers, it would stop it on whatever floor the da- the, the fire happens to be on. There's a lot of safety issues related to this building. Not that it doesn't meet the code at the time that we got the CO. I mean, I think that's important to state. The building meets all the requirements that it had to have at the time that we got the CO in 1986. The problem is, is it doesn't meet the codes today. And as a person responsible for operating a building and making sure people are safe in a building, uh, I would like to see buildings updated, uh, you know, to keep everybody as safe as possible.
Mr. Riley, could you weigh in on that now that the council's been notified, the building sounds unsafe? Uh, what is our, uh, liability or what's our responsibility on that?
Well, imagination is probably the only thing that, that, uh, limits us on our consideration. I mean, but we're inviting the public in here and, and, uh, the various things that have been discussed. I, I wanted to suggest we might want to move the meeting outside, uh, based on the current condition.
Well, I, I would like to clarify that. I want to say that, you know, the building, I'm not saying the building's unsafe. The building is safe and meets all the requirements that it was, it had to have in 1986.
But you're implying that the updated codes imply that you could have safer, safety, more safe precautions that meet 2017's updated codes?
Well, an analogy, and I don't want to simplify it too much, but analogy would be, would I rather be riding around in a vehicle that has airbags all the way around me or would I would rather ride around in a 1964 vehicle that has, uh, lap belts?
I got you. I, I guess one of the questions is, I was just thinking about it, I wrote it down, I can get to it now. Uh, as Colonel Hampton was saying, that, you know, the process will involve you and whoever the contractor is to build this building. Um, where is the point where we will try and meet every code versus what would be the standard to beat it? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, it does.
If you had a wish list of like, well, I might want these things that aren't really required, have you thought about going into the future that would maybe, I don't want to say prolong the life of the, the building or whatever equipment, but are there things that you know are necessary and then you have a sheet of things, if we could add this, this would be good as well?
Well, actually, uh, our, our building codes does a really good job of that. And so anytime we, uh, contracted for some engineering work or some design work, it, it kind of automatically happens because the architects, the engineers, they are, uh, dictating staying with the, staying with required on code. Uh, and, and then the same with the inspection department. I mean, they're very good at, uh, coming in and ensuring that we're complying, you know, everywhere that needs to comply.
I'm sure you guys would be putting a lot of fiber in to kind of plan for the future.
Well, that's a very good point. That's the other issue that, you know, right now wifi happens to be the, the, the big up and coming thing and just building wifi into a building. That's a whole nother line item now we're adding to our construction contracts to ensure we, we can, we have, uh, proper wifi throughout a building.
I mean, I know on a smaller scale, there are smart homes where there's a lot of excessive wiring that's put in for, you know, future, future things that may happen 10 or 15 years in a, in a residential house. So I'm just thinking that, let's assume that we're moving into this direction, that y'all are not going to paint us in a corner, but are going to try to do, you know, pay a little bit now versus paying a whole lot later to retrofit something is what I was getting at.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that hits on a couple of points. I mean, one of them we intended to make later in the briefing, but we can go ahead and hit it now, is, is preparing for the future. You know, not only do you potentially do things like running, you know, extra conduit that, you know, you may not have a need for today, but be prepared for, you know, new wiring requirements or something in the future. Uh, you know, I think that's a fairly common. But the other thing, and it's something we've been talking about for quite some time, and quite frankly, we've also gotten in some of our public discussions with, with, with citizens about, you know, how do we, uh, you know, not run into some of the same space issues 20 or 30 or 40 years from now that we've encountered here? Uh, and there's a number of strategies where we start talking to architects about how we do that. Uh, you know, one is we, we could build an extra floor on the, on the building and just leave it shelled out to move in someday and you could use it for storage in the near term. That may be an expensive solution to having future growth capacity. Another is just looking at where, where the world is going with driver, uh, driverless cars and what everyone, I think very rightly assumes will be a decreased demand for, for parking garages in the future. So do we design our parking garage to later have a portion of it outfitted as office space? Not dissimilar to what we recently did on Clinton with actually taking part of a parking garage and turning it into retail space. You know, that, that garage was not designed for that purpose, and so there's some things about that project that was challenging. We could actually design a garage that is prepared to receive a portion to be enclosed and turn into office space and create additional square footage 20 or 30 years from now. Uh, so there's a number of things like that that we will work through the design process, uh, with, with the architect and the engineers, uh, to ensure that we're prepared for those kind of things and, and make as good assumption as we, we possibly can about what the future might hold and, and design a building that's ready to, to be prepared for the future. The other thing I wanted to touch on is going back to, you know, design standards and inspections and things. Uh, when the city builds a building, we have the exact same standards that our, our citizens have, builders in our community have in terms of the design, the, the stamps required, the inspection process, all those things, all the permitting process. Jeff and his team go through the exact same process for anything we build that any commercial developer would have to go through as well. So, uh, you know, just because we're government doesn't mean that we get to cut corners on those kind of things. We have to meet the exact same standards everybody else does.
I guess what I was trying to say, and I hope I didn't come across, I would rather hear all of the things that, you know, if you had a, you know, in light of Christmas, if you had a wish list of all the things you think that would be unique, cool, innovative, that could save us, you know, whether that's, you know, solar panels or whatever, have you considered those things in the design of the new building and given that to the architect?
That is something we would do if we move forward with, uh, the, that's exactly right.
Thank you.
So the bottom line, I just want to see if I got this. I'm looking at your presentation. Everything you're talking about, interior renovations, elevators, electrical service, generator, HVAC, facade, roof, uh, unknowns and everything, you're, you've got pretty much a, an estimate of between 29 and 32 million that y'all have studied that pretty carefully, that-
We have looked at that, and I would like to clarify that I believe that all the numbers that we have listed here are conservative numbers on being the least cost. If everything went ideal, this would be the least cost. I want to, I guess I want to go back to, um, reflect on what happened last time in 1986. They started down a road with a very similar estimate on a renovation that they thought was going to run $120 a square foot and ended up being over $200 a square foot. I can easily see where this could do, this could be the same thing.
But then there's a perpetual maintenance problem as well, right? There, there is a cost that you can't account for that would come with this 29, 32 million that is integrated into like the people who would have to maintain it considering that it's not something new. Um, these things, if you were to make this, I guess, investment of 29 or 32 million dollars, would still within themselves have ongoing maintenance costs.
Uh, that, that's true. I would hope that, uh, that they would be greatly reduced for a period of time. Uh, but either way, uh, we are dealing with a 50-year-old main structure.
So as, as someone who is in the middle of a renovation at our house, I can tell you that those numbers will definitely go up because you'll do the renovations and then find all kinds of other things that need to be done. So, yeah, that's a very conservative number. But if we do go ahead and make that investment as high as it may be, what does it buy us?
It doesn't buy you, that's a good point because that's exactly right. It, it keeps, uh, the exact same footprint, the same square footage-
Keeps the doors open.
Keeps the doors open. It looks a little nicer and everybody's still out in the leased property that we're going to discuss in a few minutes.
Yeah, and Jeff's got a, another chart that goes to the, the broader number that gets to the other buildings that, that create the rest of City Hall. Because what you end up with is, uh, you know, you, you put $32 million in this building and it, you know, you will have extended its life a great deal and it'll be substantially better than it is now, but it'll still only be 61,000 square feet. Now, some of the renovations that would be required would consume some of that square footage, so a new stairwell would consume, you know, 100 or to 200 square feet on every single floor. You know, some of the other things, the ductwork may create wider walls, you know, chases, things like that that start consuming your square footage. So, uh, the ADA standards in bathrooms would immediately add to square footage. So you would, you would end up with a less efficient 61,000 square feet with still having to meet the rest of that need that gets you to at least 130,000 in other buildings. Now, what you'll also see is all those other buildings really add up to about 156,000. Because when you have other buildings, now you, every building has a lobby. Every building has extra bathrooms, extra stairwells, extra elevators. So, you know, the, the exact same number of people that currently fill 156,000 square feet in a single building can fill 130,000 square feet. So you get much, much more efficient. So the answer to your question is, you get a much nicer building that still meets less than half of your need.
And you still don't have the opportunity for everybody to be in this, in a shared space where collaboration is possible-
That's correct.
And where better services are delivered to the public.
That is correct.
Yeah, and this, you know, this, this presentation's about the physical structure, but there is, that's an important thing. The building doesn't exist for the sake of a building. It, it exists to enable people to interact with each other, to perform functions. Uh, and right now, you've got planning in one building and engineering in another building, and they need to be together on the same floor, not just in the same building.
Yeah.
Uh, that kind of thing exists. And so we'll be able to get to much better, more effective delivery of services to, to our citizens, uh, in, in a different kind of facility.
And you have customers who have to do business with planning and with engineering and they're tracking between the two buildings, so our service-
That's correct.
Is, isn't real good.
And actually, that is the next slide. What we did is we went through and, you know, we've been looking at, uh, just, uh, determining who all needs to move into the new administration building. And, uh, currently, this is the list. It is 156,000 square feet. Uh, some of it is made up of buildings we currently own and occupy, other buildings are, uh, buildings we lease. We actually pay a monthly lease just to put people in, in another, another location. Uh, so, you know, right now, uh, the total square footage that we are occupying for what we consider administration building is 156,000 square feet. And that's the list of them right there.
Would Operation Green Team be moved over to the new building or would it stay where it's at now?
No, they'll, so, so departments that, that we would anticipate staying where they are, uh, all the public works functions that are down off Johnson Road, as well as Fleet, would stay where it is. All of the landscape management functions, both their offices and also all the, you know, the workspaces would stay where they are on Lehman Ferry, and they've got a couple of other facilities around the, around the city. Uh, some of the maintenance functions out of general services would stay where they are over on Washington. So really what you're looking at are the, the, the office functions that, that are currently in City Hall-like spaces. So what, what he's listed here are the facilities that we would completely vacate. There's some smaller examples. So for example, Jeff Easter's office is in a building that he shares with some of his, with some of his workforce over on Washington. We would anticipate Jeff's office and, and a couple of his support staff move to the City Hall with him, but they would retain that building because it delivers other functions to the community.
What about the traffic engineering, uh-
No, it is anticipated to stay where it is just because that's a combination of office as well as warehouse, you know, maintenance functions and the yard that they have and stuffs, they really need to stay where they are. They're like landscape management.
I guess we don't want to bring public works down with all their garbage trucks down to downtown.
Sure. I, I believe we have a slide coming up that will actually list the departments as well as the, uh, the space. But in this, in this case right here, the, the slide, uh, it's, it's a graphic to show you how far everybody is spaced, uh, you know, in the, in the various buildings we're trying to combine. There's one building, it's not located in the picture. It's the Low Mill Office Complex. It's, uh, over there off Ninth. Uh, we did identify it down in the bottom, but it's not actually in the, in the picture.
So when all these were consolidated in the future, is the idea that these properties would be sold or what would be done with them?
Well, as we work through, that is, that is a discussion that, you know, we're looking for the administration and the council to decide what we do with these properties. As we look at the numbers, it's a very important part, we did not include in the lifecycle analysis of retaining versus building a new building, of gaining any, uh, any value from those, but they, they are there and they need to be taken in consideration. But for this exercise, we did not include it.
So, you know, several of those are leases, so we would just get out of the lease. So you would just stop the cost going out. You wouldn't necessarily have money come back from that. Uh, but there's others, like, you know, the engineering building, the, the public services building, that, that clearly would have good economic value. Its highest and best use is probably some commercial use, some, you know, new office building or something like that. And so, uh, I would anticipate that, that we would recommend council declare that excess and be able to, uh, to sell it.
The, the, uh, this slide right here, is this account, I guess in 1986, I don't really know what the number was, but I imagine that as we grow as a city, this number could change.
Let me, let me tell you what this slide is. This slide is based on current information. Currently, right now, uh, this is the departments that we see moving into the new administration building. The first column, uh, this is, there's approximately 122 employees and these are the departments that are currently in the admin building. The, the green column is all of the locations and the departments and the employee count that is outs, currently outside of the administration building. So what stands out for me, the elephant in the room on this one, is we currently have more people outside the administration building currently right now than we have in the building and we're trying to function as a, as a, as an efficient operation.
Right. Right. I guess that's what I'm, and maybe Colonel Hamilton said earlier and I wasn't listening correctly, we're not building to, to have 294 people. We're building a building that accounts for growth as well, because some of these are, you know, drive trucks, they're inspectors and stuff like that.
And that's what I was getting at, too. So, part of that design process will identify the strategies to be able to deal with that growth without having to build a whole nother building. Because we'll, we'll have the same issue, you know, we don't wanna move that growth and completely dislocate it. So, we, we will absolutely make that part of, part of the design process.
This, this next slide, what I wanna do is I wanna just go through a quick little exercise to start explaining the, the cost of retaining a building, this building. And then a little bit later on, we're gonna talk about the cost of building a new one. We went through and did a lifecycle analysis. We did it all the way through FY '28. As you can see, the total cost over that time period, if we retain the building, due the 27 to 32 million dollars for the repairs, and that's assuming it stays at that low conservative number, that, you know, we're gonna end up spending about $53 million because it doesn't get us anything. We still will have the leases. We'll still have the maintenance down at the public service building. We will still have ITS. And I can tell you, the public service building, it will do for some major repairs and some renovations in this next 10-year period. So, I think we put that at about halfway through the time cycle, just to make sure we got something covered for that. So, in our mind, from a lifecycle standpoint, not just construction costs, but from a lifecycle standpoint to stay here through FY '28, the city needs to be looking at spending about $53 million at the least amount.
And council, the, the little spreadsheet you see there, I obviously did not intend for you to be able to read those numbers. That's why it's, it's rolled up forward to the right. But in the back of your booklet, you have that spreadsheet in the sides that you can read.
I think it'd be real helpful for the public's benefit, and they're, you know, the folks that we work for. If, after this meeting or sometime, if we could take this slide presentation, put it on the city website, maybe Kelly can kinda put it out that it's out there available for the public or something. So that, you know, they can kinda buy in and they can understand where we are, what we're going through, and why we're talking about what we're talking about.
As you know, we have been under a process of trying to do some first phase programming of a new administration building. There's been a lot of discussion about how much square footage do we need, how many people's gonna be in it, all of that. You know, we hired a firm to help us with that. What you, the slide that you see before you, this is a, a slide that kinda gives you right now what we believe is the basic information of how we think a new administration building would, would, you know, occupy. It's, right now, we see it as a six-level facility, a six-level building. It's a total of 128,000 square feet. Keep in mind, that's less than the 156 that we currently, 156,000 we currently occupy. And this, right now, we've actually done some preliminary schematics and layouts of about who would be on which areas. Some of the items that we've taken in consideration, even comments from the council, where they would like to have a council chambers with an area off to the side that allows the department heads to sit in the, the room at the same time. So, we, we're already starting to work a little bit of programming and schematics of how a new building would, would lay out. But it's very early, but currently, right now, we see about 130,000 square foot building.
What about the idea, I think that John had mentioned, of having some extra, maybe not built-out space, but something that's ready that you could, you know, you could rough in when the ti, you know, and.
Well, I can tell you, that's, we have had a lot of discussions about that. I can tell you, either way, the city needs to be prepared in 30 years to add additional square footage. If you look at the history, which we actually looked at it over the last couple of weeks, the square, the population along with the square footage that the city occupied, from an administrative standpoint, it goes up about every 30 years. We're gonna need to have something in place, whether it's what Mr. Hamilton indicated about the parking deck, utilizing the parking deck, or having a, having a structure that we can add another floor to it, or shelling one out. That will be in our discussions and will be part of the, the decisions. What, what we wanna do as we move forward on a new building, we wanna design it and think about it and program it as a 50-year building, but only build what we have to that we can use for the first 30 years. That would be ideal. But then when we hit the 25 or 30 years that we need additional square footage, there's already a mechanism, mechanism in place in order to do that.
So, I was just running some quick numbers up here. You said earlier, the goal is 80, how many, 82% efficiency?
80% efficient, yes.
80% efficiency, and we're currently 62%.
That's correct.
Efficiency. So, if you run those numbers based on the square footage, even with the reduced square footage here at 80% efficiency, you have more usable space than you would 126 at 62%. So, there's, there's a whole lot more space here than we think there is, and there's space for growth.
Right.
That's correct, and I can tell you, I, one of the things that you know, you don't see in here is we're trying to build in some additional areas like some, potentially some pre-function area in front of, before the council chambers, some lobby space. There, there's a, there is some common space that we can utilize and even convert it in the future to other, assignable space.
Yeah, and so, you know, what we've got here, let me kinda hit on some, just some design considerations where we are right now. And we're still early in the process, and the, this list will continue to grow and get refined. But, you know, to, to make clear, what, what we're envisioning is a modern office building. So, if you go to any of the, the modern commercial buildings that are getting built around our city and state, you see some of these exact same kind of considerations, you know, better use of open space, you know, less chopped up in the offices. We absolutely have employees right now that, that will move from private offices into modular furniture because it's much more, much more efficient. Obviously, there's some functions and some positions that absolutely require a private office, but we'll go through that process of ensuring that we've set clear standards on, on that kind of situation for our employees. We're gonna work hard on making sure the right departments are loco, co-located on the same floor to get the adjacency values that we need and the efficiency and effectiveness of, of their functions. Looking at meeting space, right now, we are very challenged on appropriate conferencing space and meeting space and things like that. But when we get into a more efficient floor plan, then we have the ability to better share those things. You know, not every department needs its own, you know, 12 to 18-person conference room, but two departments could potentially share it, plus a smaller team rooms where four or five people can meet and gather and do things. And so, there's a lot of strategies that, that the commercial industry out there has learned and demonstrated to us now for quite some time. We have the opportunity to take advantage of those and leverage modern construction standards and design standards to, in our, in our City Hall and be much more efficient with the square footage. We have some things, you know, and we'll get to the site, as I think we've, we've talked quite a bit about right now. Our recommendation is that we locate the new City Hall on the block where we currently have the garage across the street. One of the things that that affords us the ability to do, the, the hill is actually an advantage. It will give us the opportunity to give the City Hall two front doors. And so, you know, where, where Jeff laid out, you know, a vision for right now, six levels. The first level is actually what you would almost think of as like a walkout basement. It would be at the Fountain Row level right here outside the, the front of the current City Hall. And you could have functions on that floor, like inspections, like fire marshal, like natural resources where, where builders and folks that are coming and getting permits on a very regular basis have very easy access into that area. It would have its own security, which does not currently exist in, in our existing facility. And then the second level would actually open out onto the Courthouse Square level, and that would be what you think of as the first floor in this building, kinda more of the ceremonial entrance into your City Hall. It'd be the place where your council chambers are located, HR, some of those kind of functions, some of the amenities that the public and, and employees need in the building could be on that floor. And that would really be the second level, but if you're coming from the Courthouse Square level, it would feel like the first floor, and then you have the other floors above it. So, the terrain actually allows us to do some unique things with the design that make the building more accessible and more friendly to, to our citizens. You know, we, we've already hit on the, the ability to expand in the future, and we think there's multiple strategies that we've already thought of, and we think the architect will bring more to the table, and we can work through what's gonna be the most efficient way to do that. You know, one area that I think we, to make this work, we, we will have to be disciplined in the way in which we design the building and occupy the building. First, you know, that issue of private offices versus going into more open modular kind of situation. It's, it's very easy to fall into the trap of chopping up your building and being inefficient with your, with your square footage. When we do that, we're being inefficient with taxpayer resources, and so I think we've gotta be disciplined to do that the right way. The other issue that we've gotta be careful of, you build extra square footage, you have a tendency to expand to fill the space, whether you really need to or not. That doesn't mean it's the wrong thing to do, but we will have to be disciplined in the way we occupy the building. And if there's areas that we intend to not be used for a period of time, we will, we will have to make certain that we put the systems in place to, to protect that and not use it until we truly need it and not just automatically expand into that space and, and waste it. And then physical security is an important thing. We're, you know, we're seeing it, living it every single day. Some of our facilities right now, that, that issue is very, very difficult to deal with, and so that will be a critical part of the design process of making sure that we've done the things we need to to keep the public safe coming into and in our building.
Okay, this is a very similar exercise that I showed earlier. This is again a lifecycle analysis based through the year FY '28. This is based on replacing the building with a new one and bringing everybody back into a single building, the 138, 128,000 square foot building. Right now, we see that the city will spend somewhere around 48, 48 million dollars over that period of time versus the other. And actually have a chart, the next chart, the blue line is based on replacing with a new admin building. The reddish-orange line, that is to retain it. Now, to, for a clarification, both of these have values or dollars on replacing the parking deck. You know, it's, it's, it's already been pretty much identified, and structurally, from a structural engineer, that deck across the street has to be replaced. There's, there's no option on that at this point in time. It's, it's at its useful life. We, we need to be considering that. Just so you know, that all the numbers that we've been discussing related to both these includes the parking deck values in here.
We are, I don't wanna jump too far ahead. We're talking about 40 million, 48 million, whatever for this period of time. Has there been any plans that's been worked out on how we're gonna pay for, for this?
Well, I, one thing I do wanna clarify there, this is like, these are lifecycle costs, the 48 million, that is not what I would see as the bond. A lot of this would be operational costs, utilities, you know, maintenance, things that would normal come, normally come out of your operational accounts.
We still are gonna have substantial capital.
Still, that's correct.
You do, and Mr. Kling, the, the 1990 capital plan that, that council approved back in September includes the, the construction dollars necessary to do this. And, and so whichever, whichever course of action you chose, those construction dollars would, would apply.
But we're not anticipating any special bond issue or any?
Well, it, it would be debt-funded, but it is modeled into the capital plan, and, and the, and the capital plan is balanced.
Mr. Easter, before you go on, you didn't talk about the elevators in the new building. What did they propose? How many elevators does a new building require?
Well, actually, right now, there has been discussions on that. There would be three elevators under the current design. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and how expensive are they, do you know?
A traction elevator that would go about six floors, that's gonna be about quarter million dollars apiece, half, $200,000 apiece.
Is there any thought to maybe put a fourth one in? You know, we seem to need those things.
Yeah, I think, you know, based on what we've seen so far, three will be sufficient.
And if I may.
Yes, sir.
And I don't mean to muddy up the water. I've sat here patiently, listening to everything, and I know that you all have put a lot of time and effort into this. Also, I'm aware that we shouldn't pump this much new wine into an old bottle as it relates to this facility, so I'm in agreement with a new facility. However, I haven't heard anyone really think about the future and, and analyze employees working from home. We need a new, we need a new facility, but we don't need some astronomical commodious facility with dashboards and the technologies that are available. With the exception of certain departments and employees, most employees can work from home. Now, if we're thinking, let's fast forward to 2030, 2050, brick and mortar, city halls are gonna be kinda like dinosaurs. And, and so, we, we've gotta think outside of the box and be creative. Now, while we must move forward with another building, and I'm listening to all of these elevators and things, you all know, I personally don't like elevators, but why not put in a nice stairwell, something similar to what the RSA building has in Montgomery that's in the middle of the building? That you can, and, and, and it's fairly wide, and it's attractive, and you can walk from one floor all the way up to the top. I do it every time I'm in Montgomery. I'd kinda like to see something like that. And then elevators for those individuals perhaps who elect not to walk or who are not able to traverse the stairs.
Yes, sir.
But, but as we move forward with this plan, let's think about the future. And let's think about whether or not we even need parking garages. Are we gonna be driving vehicles in the future or will we be utilizing Uber and Lyft? Now, some of you are probably laughing, but fast forward with me to the future, 20, 2050, where will we be?
I'd like to, I guess, throw a couple of comments out there for you on that. One is, you know, given the current condition of the building that we have, you know, the, the replacement needs to be sooner rather than later. So, I, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, we may not go to everybody working at home within the next couple of years because that's how fast we need to be making decisions on this. But the first item that you talked about related to a stairwell in the center of the building, that happens to be a pet peeve of mine, especially with this building. I'm of the opinion that a fire exit egress or stairwell needs to be in the common path of you normally walk. It doesn't need to be somewhere else in the building, somewhere other than where you just came from. Example, the last thing you want is somebody that comes up into a building and a fire alarm go off. Now they're going a whole new direction they didn't come from originally, trying to find how to exit. I personally believe that if the exits of a building ought to be in the path of which you entered the building.
Yes.
This building does not have that, so I do agree that, you know, stairwells in central locations is, is the proper thing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Question with regard to the parking. So, whether we retain or whether we replace, we're looking at moving from 513 existing spaces to 535. Is that correct? If I'm reading the very tiny, fine print.
That is correct. That is the current calculations on the amount of parking spaces.
How did we determine 535, and is that sufficient for not only the city, but also we've got courthouse folks, jurors that we're trying to accommodate?
Well, we worked with, with parking on the information, but I can tell you, some of it has to do with having the landings of the deck line up with the building and, and, and just make it fit on the, on the property properly. So, yeah, there was, there's, it's still in the works of how all that would be laid out, but currently, right now, we can get 535, I believe, with four levels on the parking deck.
And will that be sufficient for the 294 employees that will be, or however many, the, the additional employees that will be in the building? We're only adding 22 more spaces, but we're adding a whole lot more employees.
That's correct, and there has been conversations with parking on that. It's my understanding that that number will work.
And right now, very few city employees actually park in that garage. So, when, when we look at kinda the, the regional parking solutions, if you move all the city employees into that new garage, you freed up a substantial amount of spaces in the garage across the street that's currently serves the BBT building. And so, it's, it's not only 535 spaces there for 294 employees. So, you know, what you end up with, there's some percentage always on vacation, always, always sick, you know, always out somewhere else. So, you would never have all 294 employees parked there at one time. There are a certain number of city vehicles, so somebody might have their privately-owned vehicle as well as a city vehicle, so that, that's been considered. But then also the regional parking demand, not only in that garage, but then combining the new capacity that's freed up in, in the BBT garage. So, all, all that's being worked.
What's the capacity of the BBT garage?
I, I don't know the number off the top of my head. You know, obviously, that, that building uses a portion of it. I think what we've retained for the public is several hundred. I mean, it's probably, you know, 250 to 300 spaces, but I don't know. If I can get you the specific number of how many.
So, between, between that, the BBT building, the additional 20-something spaces across the way, we will be able to accommodate the additional load on this building, plus still accommodate the courthouse?
Correct.
And Mr. Easter, before you go on, Mr. Hamilton, we've been at about an hour, you know, I, I kinda planned for an hour and a half. I know we're not gonna make an hour and a half. Do you have an idea how much longer you need for your slides?
I, I think probably no more than five or 10 minutes. We just wanna hit on kinda where we are with, with site selection and then, and then the timeline going forward.
Okay, I've got council members that have, know other things tonight, so go ahead, Mr. Easter. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll go quickly into site selection. When, when we started to look at the site selection, one of the things that I, I held pretty firm to was that we wanted to be in close proximity to the Courthouse Square because that's, that's the historic center of the city. We want to be there. We had offers of other places, Constellation, other places, but we wanted to own our own place and wanted to be very close to the, to the center of the city. We also wanted to have that connection too and views of Big Spring Park, because that's a key cultural area for us. And we wanted to be integrated with the current downtown, you know. And then finally, when we looked at it, we started considering what's a constructional, constructionability of conditions and what are anticipated costs. So, we looked at about three, three different sites that we looked at for, for City Hall. Here are the three sites that we looked at. We looked at the NX site, possibility of tearing down the NX building there. We looked at the annex site, uh, possibility of tearing down the annex building there, uh, swapping over to, to the annex, uh, we looked, uh, but that would still leave us with the problem of the parking deck. Parking deck has to come down. At some point, the parking deck has to come down. It's, uh, structurally, it's, it's, uh, anticipated life, life expectancy is, is coming pretty near. Uh, the second place, we also looked at, uh, the Clinton and, uh, and Church, uh, corner up there, the Huntsville Utilities corner, uh, with the possibility of moving over there and, uh, and constructing our parking when, when we constructed over there. Um, and then the third place was taking down our parking deck, building there, and also building another parking deck, uh, a new parking deck with a new structural parking deck, uh, there. Uh, the, the option that, uh, we have chosen, uh, was that number one option, which is where the parking deck is. Uh, main reason, uh, is, is that it is close to city center, uh, it's close to the courthouse, uh, it brings us into the, uh, downtown, uh, center core area. And, uh, and thirdly, you know, it still gives us a view of Big Spring Park, it gives us, uh, makes us a part of the promenade and the building, uh, that are, are tied to the, uh, to that view path that you go from the courthouse all the way over to the Von Braun Center. And, uh, quite frankly, it's a little bit, uh, it's a little bit more affordable to build on number one than it was to build on number two or number three.
So, let me just touch on that. We, OMI, uh, was commissioned to do a full geotechnical study of, of that site and compare that to, to the knowledge of some of the other sites. And so, when we talk about, uh, less expensive, that, the, really, the, the main issue there is the foundation. Uh, that site that we're talking about, the, the recommended site, is only about ten to twelve feet down to bedrock. So, you are able to do, uh, much shallower foundations as compared to other sites. Uh, as you get away from really kind of the top of the hill there, uh, and start moving to the west and to the north and downtown, the bedrock gets much, much deeper. So, while, you know, the square footage of the building, the design of the building, what you see above the ground, uh, would be pretty much the same no matter where you put it, so you're not going to see real significant differences in costs there. Uh, the, the difference in cost is going to be the foundation, and, and the type of foundation required for a multi-story building starts running to, to, to pretty big numbers. So, that's the main difference. Uh, secondly, uh, no matter where we put City Hall, uh, as, as Mr. Easter and as the mayor has said, the, the parking garage, uh, the municipal garage needs to be rebuilt regardless. Uh, so we have the opportunity to go ahead and rebuild it, take care of some regional parking demand, uh, and then free other sites, uh, for future growth. So, uh, the Huntsville Utilities site in particular, uh, would require an additional garage there, in addition to continuing to meet the parking demand that will exist in this part of downtown, across the street. So, you end up building two garages instead of one in order to accommodate, uh, that site. So, you know, and as, there, there's a lot of things we can do and have done with planners, just kind of looking at, uh, you know, the commercial viability of certain sites and what's the highest and best use. Uh, and so ultimately, uh, given, given the prominence, given the, you know, the symbolic nature of a city hall, in addition to the, just the daily functions it performs, uh, and given ultimately the cost, uh, our recommendation is that we go to what's labeled as site number one here on, on the municipal garage site.
Was any, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Was any thought ever given to, um, taking down, you know, the old police department, uh, building and putting in, I think, a separate, uh, City Hall tower? I think that one time, there was actually a, a plan to do that. Of course, that, I think that was something that was done in the early nineteen eighties or, or seventies.
The annexes over here.
Yeah, I mean, is there a way you could take that out and, and put that, that would...
Well, and that's what was site number two on that map. It wa, it was one of the, is one of the considered sites. So, as, as we look at, uh, you know, really what was the, what was the consideration, uh, while it probably would be your, your second choice, it does not fit the criteria that we used as well as site number one. So, uh, you know, all, all three of the sites are physically possible. You know, we didn't look at any site that turned out to be physically impossible. Uh, all three sites are physically possible, but in terms of the, the site that best fits the criteria that was established, uh, site number one is, is the better site.
Yeah. And, and we really seriously looked at that, because it would have been a very easy flip to take that area and then move, move City Hall over there, take all our stuff over there, then take this one down. But it really, uh, the end result of it was, we still had a parking deck had to come down. Uh, we did not use any of that for additional uses. Plus, you put a City Hall right there on Church Street. Church Street is becoming what you would call a, a center of activity for us. We have the art museum there, have Panovino, have, um, Milky Moon Cow, whatever the name of that place is. Uh, we have a, a number of sites in there that people want to go to and want to be a part of, uh, and, and it needs a few more added to it to, to make it a, a total activity site. And adding City Hall in there, the problem with City Hall is, is open Monday through Friday, eight to five, and then after that, it's closed. And on weekends, it's closed. And it doesn't add anything to the livability of an, of an area. Uh, City Hall fit much better up on the corner, uh, according to our planners, uh, because it would be, uh, it would tie back in with the park, but it would not detract from the park. It wouldn't, it would still make for activity. Uh, the park would make its own activity down there. So, um, that, those were some of the reasons that we finally came to. And finally, cost. Cost broke into it, uh, with the ability, with the power of not having to build as, as deep a foundations, uh, it made, made the cost, uh, become much, much better.
And council, we've got, uh, we've laid out a timeline. I want to be clear, this is, uh, as, as really Mr. Easter sat down and worked through the programming, the process, this timeline reflects what we, uh, believe could be the fastest week to go, right? That doesn't mean that council is obligated to go this fast. It's just really, we're laying out for you, this is as quick as, as we think we could possibly go. If something unknown were to pop up that would cause a delay, that certainly could happen, or council could, could say, no, we want to go slower. So, uh, this is not intended to, uh, to make you feel like we're rushing. It just lays out for you what, what we think is, is possible. So, you know, we are, we are still in phase one of the, uh, the GMC study. Uh, they should finish their, their final report soon to kind of close out phase one. What that really does is, is just locks in, uh, the, the space requirement, their assessment of that, and, and some basic schematics, uh, to, as proof of principle that it can fit in, in the kind of building we're discussing. Uh, their contract already has a phase two in it, which, uh, does not require a council vote. You've already approved that contract. They could then transition to phase two, uh, with the mayor's approval, and that would take to a, a full schematic design. That does not result in buildable, uh, designs. That gives us good schematics, uh, shows us, you know, fully demonstrates that, that what we want to do is possible, uh, and would then serve as the input to an architectural design that would be the next phase. That would require a council vote. So, uh, we anticipate, coming back to you in, in second quarter of calendar year twenty eighteen, so these dates on this are the calendar year, not the fiscal year, uh, we anticipate being prepared to, to bring you a recommendation to move forward to architectural design. And so, that's the first action that would require a council vote and approval, would be approving that architectural contract, uh, to be able to take us to, uh, to construction documents. And so, that process would, uh, would go through, uh, most all of, of twenty eighteen. And so, in early in twenty nineteen, we would anticipate those documents being complete, and then we'd be prepared to, to bid construction. Uh, and, you know, this, like, like any of our construction projects, as we go through the, the normal bid process, uh, for, uh, for general contractor. And so, then, as typical with any construction project, the next, uh, vote that would, uh, that council would have to decide to take would be approving a construction contract. So, those are really the two decision points for council, would be an architectural contract and a, and a construction contract, are the, the two things that we need to have done that would require your approval. Uh, and then we think the, uh, the construction period's about eighteen months, uh, so you're really looking at twenty twenty-one before you move into, uh, into a new building. And again, I want to emphasize, that's, that's as fast as we think we could go, uh, you know, not, not knowing what, what things may pop up to slow us down.
In the, uh, architectural, uh, plan, is that something that we could do an RFP for to, uh, I guess, let the administration facilities or the appropriate people, uh, you know, sit in and then bring a recommendation to the council?
So, I, I'm not, not sure I understand what you're asking, so...
How will the architect be...
Instead of sourcing it to one company, I mean, can we do an RFP, like we've done on some things, and then see what we get? It's not necessarily dollars and cents as much as, you know, who's got the best plan or...
Let me, let me say that, uh, your architectural plan, you know, your architectural fees are pretty much set. I mean, they're, they're, they're not any different, uh, one firm to the other. Uh, the second thing is, we, we're working with one, we're working with Goodwill Mills Haygood, uh, Kaywood on this, and we've been working through the process with them. They know what we're looking for, what, uh, buildings would maybe tie in with other buildings, and what we're looking for in this. I would hate to change horses in the middle of the stream on this one. I think it would be much, especially if they know our utilization study, they know exactly what we're looking for, if we're looking for stairs in the middle, if we're looking for, uh, elevators on the end, however many elevators. I mean, they've already done the programming on this, um, and I would, I would prefer to stay with the same architect that we have started with. We've done that on numerous projects. We pick out somebody who is good in that type of, uh, building, and that's who, that's who we stayed with. That's what we did with the Aquatic Center, that's what we've done with all, all the others that we've done.
What happens to the existing site once we move over there?
Uh, ultimately, that'll be a, that'll be a council decision. So, you know, obviously, there's been, uh, discussion that the downtown master plan calls for, uh, it being used for a commercial development. Uh, you know, you've seen, you know, the, you just, obviously, it's been talked about a great deal at, at just about every council meeting for the last three or four months, to some extent or another. And so, uh, while, while tonight's presentation is not about that, obviously, that becomes the next step, is as you, as you decide, you know, assuming you decide to build a new city hall and clear the site, uh, then, then that's the next, really, the next decision that you need to make. I, I don't think we necessarily need to be in a hurry to make that decision, though there's opportunities to make some, you know, essentially near simultaneous decisions and take advantage of market forces. So, that's really what is driving that discussion, is, is the opportunity to take advantage of our current go-th rate and, and, and opportunities for, for developers to make investments here. So, uh, I would expect in the very near future that, uh, Mr. Davis will be presenting to you a, you know, a, a draft development agreement for you to consider, uh, a development on this site, but ultimately, that becomes a council decision as to whether or not to move forward with it.
But just to, just, the, the snapshot is that this site becomes a promenade to the Big Spring Park and also returns space to the park. And then there's a building that's attached to, an iconic building that animates the park.
Correct. So, the, the master plan called for improving the pedestrian connection from the courthouse square all the way down into the park to, to Church Street. And so, that, that promenade that, that you've seen talked about and is included right now in all the conceptual designs of this area out of the master plan, uh, is exactly what does that. And yes, the footprint of that promenade does come into some of the footprint of this existing building. So, um, I don't know exactly how many feet, it's probably ten to twenty feet, but I'm kind of, I'm estimating there just based on what I saw in, on the design. Uh, and that, that comes out all the way, the, of the frontage of what this parcel would become. One of the things that, you know, uh, as people pull up the parcel maps of this area, uh, it's some crazy-looking lines, all right? And now, some of that is because Big Spring Park East actually didn't exist that far back in our past. It actually used to be a road and a parking lot. And so, those, those lot lines that you see actually follow the, the right-of-way that is still exist on the map. People have seen the surveying that's going on around here. Regardless of what council may choose to do with this property, we need to, to update those parcel maps to reflect the, the real boundaries of the park versus the surrounding parcels. And so, one of the things that will occur is, is those lines go away, and we create, uh, what is genuinely the park on a single parcel, so it can be managed appropriately and protected appropriately. And council in the past has taken action to protect the park, but those parcel maps don't necessarily line up with what we all know is the intent, so we can create those maps. That also then allows you to create the parcel here, that you can then make a decision on what happens with it, independent of it being tied into other things. Uh, so you'll see that occur. But that, that new line, that, that boundary in that parcel will go through about a third of the way into the footprint of this building, adding the piece to the north to the park, and the piece to the south becomes a separate parcel, that, that would really be what you would then contemplate to, what to do with it.
And when, when will we see the plan for that?
Uh, you know, I, I do not have a specific date. I know Mr. Davis is working with, uh, with developers on, on development agreement, but I, I don't know that we have a specific date that we can give you right now, but...
The letter of intent does have a deadline. Is that correct?
It does, but, you know, as, as, as we've said, and we've had a lot of folks ask us about that, an LOI is a non-binding document. It, you know, it really becomes an outline for a future agreement. Uh, we certainly have a desire to have it done by the end of this, this year, but, you know, without council voting on it, it's a non-binding document. And so, uh, if it makes more sense to, uh, to go past that date, then, then that should be fine.
Maybe more likely to see it in first, into January somewhere?
Uh, Councilman Shane Davis, so, you know, your decision what to do with this property should you move forward with a new city hall, uh, you know, economic development's really fickle, uh, it's more about timing than anything a lot of times, uh, due to variables in, in the market. You know, what is the pressure demand for that use that, that you may be wanting to see on a piece of property, what interest rates are doing, what the economy's doing? So, there's so many mixes there to get a project to go forward. Uh, case in point, you may remember several years ago, we put out an RFP, uh, for a hotel project across the street from the VBC, uh, to be, uh, worked in on that parking garage. We got zero responses, and it had to do with the market. Uh, so, you know, your decision, when you, uh, decide to do something to this site, whether it be City Hall, or you move City Hall and you decide to maybe open it up to market for sale to, to add value to our community, uh, timing can be very crucial. Uh, I can tell you that we are still in discussions with the LOI. We are not at any point in a stage to bring anything before this council. Uh, there are some discussions going on that we're, uh, a part on. Uh, we will not bring you something that we do not think is a good value to our citizens and to this council. We've never done that under Mayor Biden's administration. We don't plan to do it on this site. Uh, this site is very special. Uh, as, as we got so many responses from the public with updating the downtown master plan, we realized that. And we had UDA bring some, some ideas to the public in several public open meetings, and the result of, of you adopting that master plan was a result of that public input. It's a very challenging project to pull off. Uh, it's a, it's a very ambitious project that would be phenomenal for downtown in this market, uh, so it's got to be right. So, we're having those discussions with a group that come to us right after that and said, you know, we would be interested in making that type of investment. Uh, I've had since then, I've had no phone calls from any other competing groups to say, could I get in line with that? Uh, because it is a very challenging, to implement that UDA, uh, plan is very challenging. It's a, it's a lot for someone to buy off, to try to do. And in doing so, um, you know, our negotiations are still ongoing of trying to get a document that protects the city, provides, guarantees what our intent is for the property, should this be something you wish to do. I mean, we would bring you something, and you may not feel confident in moving forward with that at this time. That's a decision for this council. My job and the administration's job is to put something together that is doable, should you desire to do it, and we're not there yet.
I would be glad to support, you know, the cons, I've seen the concept, I understand that. I'd be glad to support that, if, you know, but I guess as far as the process, I'd just like to feel like it was out there where if somebody, you know, I don't know who, somebody else out there wanted to submit something. I mean, we can look at it, y'all look at it, and you say, all right, Kling, we looked at it, uh, we're going back to the first one, we've been through a process. I mean, I'd be more comfortable with that, but, you know, give us some time with this thing, because it's kind of like you're trying to paint us into a corner where, you know, we're at all the meetings, nothing comes up, nothing comes up, nothing comes up, and then, hey, we've got something, but we got to have it done by, you know, within two weeks or something like that, where...
Certainly. And, and, and we're not trying to do that, Councilman Kling.
And Mr. Davis, may, Mr. Kling, that is not what's been going on, uh...
I just want to make sure that...
We have been telling the administration all the times, and the council will move forward when the council feels like moving forward, and, and the administration understands that, and they respect that.
Well...
There is no painting in the corner, there's no deadline, and we...
I just want to make sure we all, we all understand that, because I think, uh, you know, we've been through a great process on the downtown master plan, and I think that's, we've been through a great process on the Downtown Master Plan, and I think that's, that's had a lot of community buy-in, and I think this, you know, what we're talking about now can have a good buy-in. We just let the folks know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, you know...
And, and Councilman Kling, as, as Council President Russell stated, that is not our intent. We are not at a stage to even bring you an ideology that we're that close, okay? So, so we have some work to do before we would bring points of interest to you, and then ultimately to a, a development agreement for that LOI. We just, it's not that things have broken down, it's just they're very complex, and there's three or four issues that, you know, we're a part on. And, and we may get there and we may not, but we're, we're diligent at working that. But we're not going to rush to you a development agreement and put it on two weeks for council and say, you've got to vote on this. We're, it's going to be open just as it has been since day one. We don't plan on...
Again, I can be open to the concept which y'all are talking about, whether it's that company or whomever, it's just want to make sure we're...
We're going to continue to brief you and the public.
And that's why we're here tonight, to brief you and the public and to make sure everybody understands. If you saw that timeline, go back to the timeline there, Jeff. If you saw that timeline, that timeline has to interchange with, with the building if, if there is going to be another building here. That has to interchange with it, because this building has to be gone before you can put another building here. So just know that, you know, we are working through this, and we are working through this with council. I mean, we have been talking for, I guess it's been two years now, Dennis, that we started off with the Downtown Master Plan, and we started having meetings and chariots and everything else, and all the, all the, the big picture planning that we've done. And so we've done that so that we can be open and transparent through the whole process. We have been open and transparent through the whole process. We told you that we had a letter of intent, which is not a contract, and let's, let's spell it out, not a contract. Letter of intent is a letter of intent that tells us that we're trying to work with someone to come up with something that fits within our master plan and fits within what we want, want to see in this area. And this is what our, that what we paid a planner to come up with to show us what we wanted in the area, what we had our planning staff work into, what we had our citizens work with, and all of it came out to a master plan that was very good. That's why we brought that master plan to council to say, look at this master plan. Is this what you want? Is this what you're looking for? And we voted on it at council, and we had public comment at that time. We have time and time and time again brought this back so that we can make sure that the public understands what we're doing. And we will continue to bring it back time and time again. We've sat here for tonight for an hour and a half to tell you the, just, just the essence of the City Hall being moved. The next, next portion of it ties into another development, if there is another development, but there's a lot of moving parts that have to be put together to see if there's another development, and to see if there's something that we can bring to you that fits within the guidelines of what we, we, we all agreed that we would do when we looked at our Downtown Master Plan.
So councilmembers, on this building, we're, we'll probably be asked to vote sometime in the second quarter of 2018. So keep in mind, you need to be talking to your constituents and be ready by, we'd like you to be ready by March. Again, it doesn't have to be March, but that's just if we're going to try to keep on some kind of schedule. And, and I certainly agreed to that schedule and thought it was very reasonable, you know, to, I think we can get it done by then.
Just for the sake of discussion, just like I understand things, let's say, you know, we move ahead with a new location and a new City Hall. Would we stay here, or would this location be vacant, vacated?
We would stay here until a new City Hall is built, and at that time, we would move to the new City Hall, and this, this vacant building would, would be part of some development that you would have to approve.
Anything else from the administration? Councilmembers, your schedules, do you, okay? We'll, we'll take public comment. Mr. Devonish, please go ahead.
Tom Devonish, 2807 Castle Pines. Really, the only thing I wanted to say is, is the LOI keeps people from, other developers from expressing an interest in this. If I remember reading the, the LOI correctly, it specifically says that it, that we've agreed to negotiate only with, in this case, the unnamed to-be-formed corporation that, that Triad Crunkleton is, is forming. And so that, you know, XYZ, any of the other developers that might be willing to, to bid on this property are not allowed to, the city's not allowed to talk to them.
Mr. Devonish, is that all you have for the council?
So I guess the other thing that I noticed is the, the Johnson, Old Johnson High...
Mr. Devonish, we're really talking about Downtown City Hall right now?
Okay, so that's it. That's fine.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, you want to address that real quick?
Yes, Council President. So, as I said, this is a very challenging project, it's a very ambitious project. To enter into an LOI is very customary for something like this, because the private developer wants to do some due diligence. And that due diligence on a project like this is over $100,000 of real cash that the developer will spend. For this project alone, just the due diligence that they've done from, you know, just a financial piece, from a preliminary architect, just to try to get a cost so that they can figure out a finance and see if they're, you know, they can make a profit. I mean, it's a private development. I know they have spent over $150,000 in their due diligence. It would not be prudent to a city or a private organization in a business transaction to say, you know, we're interested in listening to your proposal, but if someone comes along while you're spending this money, we may change horses. It's just a customary stance. That's why we've got a, you know, a deadline date in there that, you know, we either going to have to come terms, or they're going to have to say, we're interested, we feel that we can provide that UDA-type project. The LOI for a project this magnitude is very customary business in, in any setting.
Thank you. Mr. Piff, do you wish to...
Question from Mr. Davis. Are there, are there any other developers that have expressed interest?
I've received no phone calls, and it's very, been very public.
Mr. Piff?
Thomas Piff, 11314 Del Cress Drive. Yes, this due diligence stuff, that's the cost of doing business for developers. There's much more money involved than $150,000. I think that's called tithing. Now, it's still a fact that almost nobody in Huntsville knows that you're selling this to a private developer without a RFP, like the Johnson RFP, that you're wanting to sell it as a 99, as a permanent sale of this property instead of a 99-year lease, and as you told me at a phone conversation, Mayor Battle, that it's harder for the developer to get financing on a 99-year building. That's why they're selling their first-floor offices over there across the street at the PNC Building, and the fourth floor's available, and there's more property available. They want to sell it while it's still sellable. We haven't heard what fair market value might be, and I think that should already be a known number and should be broadcast to the public, please. I also don't understand why we can't own the building. We own the garage that your fabulous Cotton Row is in. Also, I don't think people understand what a 17-story building or however tall, there's nothing in least bit firm about this LOI. What is a 17-story building going to look like overlooking our park? Who pays to tear down City Hall to make this property available for the developer? Do we pay for it, and how much will that cost, Mr. Easter? And the handicap promenade that's been promised by Mr. Hamilton, who owns that, who pays for it, who maintains it, and if someone slips and cracks their head on it, who gets sued? The city or the developers? It's going to basically place, be a place for tables, for restaurants, that'll someday succeed or fail, and then become lawyer's offices, and then the park will be private again, just like you fear with government buildings. And then also, why is there supposed to be a 50-year covenant over Big Spring Park East in the LOI? And finally, I don't know if you can redraw the property lines based on the resolution in 2008 to protect our park, Resolution 456 in the year 2008.
Thank you, Mr. Piff. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Ms. Reed?
I don't have on my snake clothes tonight, but this is a rattlesnake coat.
All right.
When I come down here with these on, I'm serious, serious business. I didn't, I, I thought this meeting tonight, and it was an election night, and I have a problem with that, whoever made the deal, but what I thought we was going to hear tonight was about this property and the developer, and what you all are going to do with it, and let us know if we have an option. And I've also heard there's a letter of intent that every one of you signed. You didn't ask no questions, and the attorney said it's not binding on anything. And the way I look at it, you've got till 12:31 to make a deal with a developer. Now, have you all made that deal yet? And is this a fact? Mr. Shane Davis knows if we got to get this deal closed by 12:31 of this year, I'd like to know. I came down here to get some information tonight. I've been wild about this a long time. And Mayor Battle, I've been coming here 30 years, long before you ever been here. 30 years, right here, just smack upon it.
So why did, why did you let them rebuild the, the building then?
I want this property.
You had the chance, 1986. You should have torn it down and built a new one for us.
She wasn't here in 86.
Who's that talking?
That's me, Mr. Russell.
Good. I've seen many come and go up there, and I'm going to see many more if y'all don't straighten up and start getting serious and use some common sense, and you're not using any. Our schools are in the biggest mess it's ever been in.
Ms. Reed, please.
The city, wait a minute, just a minute, I'm not through.
No, ma'am. We're going to talk about City Hall tonight, please.
I'm saying the city is in the, going in the same direction. I'm asking you, you didn't know the value of the property you gave the condo department man. Somebody, some of you need to be in the real estate business. I'd like to know the value. This property's not for sale. It's not to be given away at any price for a 99-year lease. That's five generations. Why in the world are y'all got your mind on up there? This property, City Hall, needs to be put right back where it is. That parking garage is not hurting anybody over there, and you're going to run people up and down the streets and run them all over everywhere. I didn't see anything tonight about what you're going to do with this property. That's going to keep me up. And do you have to vote on any, any of this before the end of the year? At the next council meeting, are you planning on voting some of these deals that you've heard up there tonight?
Ms. Reed, we just showed you the time, the timeline was just shown, the council will choose to do what it wishes to do. The administration asks us to be prepared the second quarter of 2018 to vote on an architectural contract. That doesn't mean the council will have to...
2018?
2018, the second quarter, the calendar quarter.
To vote on what?
An architectural contract. They put it up on the slide, and we'll, you have a copy, I'll get you a copy of the slides, and you can see...
I want a copy of the, the letter of intent too, which the lawyer says he can't give it to me. He can't even give me a letter of intent that y'all's plans and what you're doing with this big developer on this property. I got a real problem with that.